Call the Board of Alderman meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for August 6, 2013. First item on the agenda is Plays of Allegiance. If everyone would stand and face the flag. Alderman Cornell will lead us.
Plays of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Excuse me. First item on the, or not the first item, third item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of July 16, 2013. Any corrections or changes?
Motion to approve the minutes for July 16. Second?
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the regular board's meeting minutes of July 16, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 3B, executive session minutes from July 16, 2013.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from July 16, 2013.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Flake. Who would my second come from? Chairman Alderman Dreyer to approve the executive session minutes from July 16, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item four, hearing from the public. Each one of our meetings, we give the public an opportunity to come forward and address the board. We ask that you limit your discussion to five minutes or less. We ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and keep your remarks kind enough. So if anybody would like to address the board, please do so at this time.
Yes, my name is George Evly. I own a service station in Conical Station down here at 715 Highway 47. I have a question.
Could I interrupt you for a second?
Can I wait for the number 18 or should I have it now?
I was going to say, at number 18, you're going to be invited to address the board with unlimited time.
Okay.
Is five minutes enough?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll just hold my comms.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Not hearing from anyone, we'll extend that statement courtesy to the Board of Alderman. If anybody from the board would like to address the public or make any statements, please do so at this time.
Yeah, I would like to. I don't know if I need to talk to the chief or Terry or Brad. I have a request from the property owner at 418 Milltown that the yard to the direct north of it has weeds or grass as high as my knees. So apparently, we've probably been issuing whatever we issued to them for quite a period of time, and I'm wondering if we've arrived to the point where the city needs to either cut that down and send a bill or do whatever we do in circumstances.
What was this street again, sir?
It's, well, it's the home just north of 418 Milltown Road.
I'm not familiar with that address, but I'll look at it and make sure it's good signal.
It may even be 418A, I think.
Well, it's better than car length you had last time.
Yeah, well, that's true. And thank you for whoever went out and cut the ditches down on Milltown Road. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Alderman Clark?
Nope.
Alderman Cassely?
No.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderman Flake?
No.
Alderman Dreyer?
No.
You all are easy tonight.
We expect working to talk.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm afraid of. We're going to move on to item six, mayor's report. I just have a couple brief remarks I'll mention to you. First item, I just kind of mentioned to you, the audit with the state audit is about to come to a close. We had an opportunity to meet with the auditors tonight, go over their concerns. They're going to go back and kind of give their revised report to us, so we should hear back from them within two to three weeks. Hopefully, at that time, we'll be able to release something to the public and let you know where we stand on things. So it's getting closer, so I did want to mention that. Another thing I wanted to mention to the public, the Warren County Health Department is hosting a safety festival, and they asked if I would mention that, this Saturday, August 10th, from 9:00 to 1:00. Looks like they've got a lot of neat things going on. They're going to give some different immunizations to children and adults. Probably be worth people's time to go by and check that thing out. So this Saturday, 9:00 AM to 1:00. The other thing I want to mention is I want to congratulate Melody Rue, our city clerk. We got a letter from the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association, and it says, "I'm honored to inform you that you've been certified as a Missouri registered city clerk from the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association. You will be recognized as attaining your certification on September 17, 2013 during the municipal league conference general luncheon in Branch, Missouri." Thank you and congratulations, Melody.
Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thanks.
The only other thing, I've got a bit of bad news for the residents of Warrenton. There's been an armadillo sighting within the city of Warrenton. I have to attest to you that I'm the one that saw the armadillo. Didn't think they were here, but they're here. So this will be an interesting challenge for animal control on how they handle that. And that's all I have. And I'm ready to move on to item seven, approval to hire Erica Rue as a seasonal worker at the yard waste site with a start date of 8:10 at $7.45 an hour. Most of you know that we decided we're going to put a person out at the waste site to open the gate and accept yard waste and so forth, so that's what that's all about. If there's no questions or discussions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Erica Rue as a seasonal worker at the yard waste site with a start date of 8:10 at $7.45 an hour.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the hire of Erica Rue as a seasonal worker at the yard waste.
Just had a question. Is that to prevent people from helping other than yard waste? Is that what's happening?
Uh, yeah, yeah. And just to answer your question, that's exactly what happened, that we thought it was just going to be up and ad mill type thing, but we were getting other, you know, building supplies and that type of stuff out there, so. Lost my train of thought. Alderman Flake made a motion, Alderman Dreyer seconded. Approval to hire Erica Rue as a seasonal worker at the yard waste site, starting date of 8:10 at $7.45 an hour. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Erica's not here tonight, I assume?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number eight, request a letter of agreement for Truesdale to furnish water to Rebecca Boone School, businesses on East Veterans Memorial Parkway in Truesdale. And our good friend, I think Truesdale Mayor Rue is here.
Yes, sir.
And would you come forward and kind of address that issue?
Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman, appreciate your time this evening. On behalf of the City of Truesdale and Board of Alderman, I'm requesting the City of Warrenton to enter an agreement with the City of Truesdale concerning water service in Truesdale. This agreement would take the City of Warrenton, would state the City of Warrenton agrees City of Truesdale should provide water service for residential and commercial businesses located within the city limits of Truesdale and is willing to approve these customers and remove from Warrenton's water line the business along East Veteran Memorial Parkway from the city limits east to the Coca-Cola plant and Rebecca Boone School on South Street are the areas being discussed. At this time, the discussion agreement will not include the Warrenton area industrial park on South Spadey Lane. Recently, Cochrane Engineers have completed a survey of our water system and sent into Missouri Department of Natural Resources for approval. This report indicates the City of Truesdale does have the capacity to provide water to these customers. The approval was received on March the 11th, 2013, with the requirement of a formal agreement between Warrenton and Truesdale be finalized before Truesdale connects any customers to their water system that are currently being served by Warrenton. Work by the City of Warrenton is recently being done on South Street at the Rebecca Boone School. However, the street has not been repaired yet. With this approved agreement, the City of Truesdale would take care of that repair. I respectfully request the board to approve an agreement between the two cities on this matter, and I do have copies if you all would like of the letter.
Sure. Any questions for the Mayor Rue?
Does this include or exclude Coke?
Uh, it excludes Coke. They have their own water systems. I know they are committed to both cities for backup kind of situations.
You say it excludes Coke?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The Mayor Rue, do you have water lines now along Veterans Memorial Parkway? And I heard, would you have to install lines to?
We're going to have to install. We've got dead ends in a couple of areas. We'd like to loop our water system, excuse me. The, that was part of our survey to find out what's necessary to bring our water system where it's completed, complete connections, because we have a dead end, as you know, there's usually problems with water quality. So when we did this survey for DNR, they suggested that to loop that area and another area east of there, and that's when we thought, I guess it was about a year, year and a half ago, to contact all these businesses. First of all, see if they were willing to make the change. I kind of advised them as to what we were proposing, and it was pretty much unanimous that they would all agree to come into Truesdale Water. Now, the school, I've got a meeting, I think it's Thursday night they meet, and I have had conversations with Dr. Chandler, and I've given him all the information. It's a matter of information to them, but if it's approved and we do go forward with the agreement, you know, they have no problem coming on board.
So you would install water lines parallel to our water lines?
Well, of course, yeah, with the engineering study. I think it, Melody Rue, you're pretty familiar with that, with that engineering report. Are we running parallel to Warrenton's existing line?
That hasn't been determined yet. We haven't actually gone into the interior. And yes, we would be running the lines.
The only other comment I want to make, have you had any conversations with the St. Charles Water District? I mean, would they have an issue with us turning water lines over to another city, or is that within their jurisdiction?
I, from what I understand, it's not within their jurisdiction. I think east and south of us is the St. Charles Water District number two, but it doesn't come into our township.
Mayor, and if I can interrupt, and because this is a significant legal issue, I want to make sure that it's clear on this, because the, just by the nature of the relationship between Warrenton, Truesdale, and St. Charles County Water District, there's a portion of, in my belief from looking in the map, a portion of some of this property that is located within the district. Now, I'm not sure that, some of it are lines, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but the preliminary issue, which was the same issue I had brought up the last time there was a request, when there was property that we knew that was located in the St. Charles County Water District is, and that was the industrial park, is the fact that just by nature of how it's kind of happened and occurred, we have serviced, you know, landowners or property owners, commercial businesses or residential business inside the water district. And by state statute and federal law, there are federal laws that fund their districts, and by nature of those federal laws, we do not have the right to service people in the district, now, in their district. And we've done that by agreement and whatnot, but it is my opinion if any of this property is located in the water district, and I believe some of it is, Mayor, and, you know, they're on maps, so it's probably something you have to get clear. Have you contacted the water district about it?
It's been a while. We did have some conversation quite a while back, I don't know, a couple of years ago, and their comment, it's not in writing, was basically they didn't have any clean, any of the water in that district, in that area, rather.
Well, and I would say that our most recent conversations, because they're elected board, and it changes, because we were going to do a bicycle agreement, and we had a conversation a couple of years ago about that, and then they decided they didn't want to do it. So I, for, it's, you know, and I've brought this issue up about the St. Charles County Water District. This city does not have the authority, if it is customers within the water district, to do any type of agreement or turn over any customers to the City of Truesdale, because they're by law, federal and state law, customers that are by the state statute, the water district's customers. And if you take customers from the water district, you're required, there's a statutory formula for figuring out the cost of that customer over a period of years, that you can purchase or go to the ballot to purchase those customers from them. It's a complicated system. We actually found out about this when we had an issue with Montgomery County, a couple, water district, a couple of years ago. So my legal advice to the board, you know, Mayor, it's the same thing I said before, is until you guys see something from the water district either disclaiming this from their territory or saying, "This is our territory and we're going to give these customers to Truesdale," I don't think you guys have the legal ability, without liability, to unilaterally turn over customers unless they're released from the district by the statute or by some type of written mechanism approved by their board saying, "Then guys can cease your service." I think that preliminary question, that's the same thing I brought up, you know, when I had sent some correspondence before to the City of Truesdale, is because it's a hefty penalty that that statute has for taking customers from a water district. So, you know, I'm not comfortable without anything formal with the water district or formal communications that you guys consider turning these customers over until we know either 100% they're, the map, I think the map, Mayor, is 1978 or something like that.
Right.
You know, it's not anything recent, but it's close enough that I feel like you guys need clearance from water district before you can consider this request.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question, Counselor. Is it the experience of the city with Montgomery that when you, in essence, turn over customers, that there could be a purchase arrangement?
Absolutely.
I recognize that the City of Warrenton has a capital investment in those lines, and therefore there is value beyond just the revenue stream that the city has put into the customers.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, you could even look at the statute as guidance. If it's, if it's Warrenton turning it over to Truesdale or considering turning it over to Truesdale, you could look at the statute as the guidance, as the standard for what a customer is over a period of time. And you could say, "Well, this is what the standard is if you buy customers from a water district." You know, so you absolutely could do that. And it's got like, I think it's 30 years, Terry, is that right?
I don't.
It's the expense of the customer, the cost, whatever, over a period. That's one part of it. You could look at it and, you know, kind of make a calculation all of an hour.
So if this issue is resolved with St. Charles District, it would not be unreasonable for this board to say, "If you're going to come back with this request again, come back with a dollar amount that you're going to pay for those," or is that dollar amount assessed through the statute?
Well, I think, I think you guys can put arbitrarily a value on it. You could make it a dollar, you could make it nominal, but I think you do have to look at infrastructure investment, which is part of what that statute calculates, and also calculates an infrastructure investment over a period of years. So it's a good guidance, and I could get together with Mr. Joyce and kind of give an idea of what the statute is, but I just, after the initial discussions with the water districts, and then you did the research on the statutes and the federal law, it's just something that this board can't consider unless there's clearance from the water district.
Any other questions? Alderman Clark, you good?
Yes. Good at this point.
Anything from any of you?
I hope we can get a clarification when we're ready or getting straightened out first.
We'll make that request from St. Charles Water District.
St. Charles Water District?
Yeah, we'll get it in writing.
And then see where, see where we stand on there, and then I think, until we get that done, I don't think we can do anything else on this.
I understand.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think, Mayor, you know, I mean, we've had discussions about it before. It's really protecting both cities.
Oh, absolutely.
Because the liability issue is pretty significant, so if we just make sure, if you can maybe get them a description of the properties and get clarification whether they believe it's in their district or not, it may not be, they may claim it or whatnot, then we can just kind of go from there and see if it's something, you know, get that preliminary issue out of the way.
I'll get that started, and then I'll have Mr. Joyce contact you when we're ready to propose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Terry, would we be willing to, through our county records, be able to figure out a cost of the investment in the infrastructure that we're talking about, or is this as old as the map?
I think potentially older than the map. Probably the calculations that we could do is maybe have guys department look at the length of the lines we're talking about and try to put some kind of cost for those lines together, but to find the initial cost, I think is probably not possible.
Any other questions? Then we're going to move on to item number nine, tourism funding requirements for nonprofit and fundraising policy change and fireworks. Who's addressing that? Mr. Hop? And Mr. Shell Harvey?
Mayor, Alderman, so we're discussing with the tourism board, requesting a change. Currently, $300 is the maximum amount used, or we can award for funding for advertisement for 501(c)(c) companies. We'd like to set it to $600 for one-day events and $2,000 for multi-day events. We're still good. We've added a couple safeguards in there. We've, it's got, the people requesting the money have to prove to us that there is actual tourism money coming into the city, so it's got to bring outside money into the restaurants, the hotels, the gas stations, stores. And, I mean, I think, I don't know if you all have a copy, but anyhow, it's pretty self-explanatory.
What triggers the request? I mean, because there's not a marketing, enough people coming in, you think if there's more dollars, we'd get more interest?
Right. 25% of all the tourism money has to be used for advertising. You know, that's state statute, and I think that $300 is just not enough to make a dent in any, any project, whether it's for the Chamber of Commerce, or if we do concerts in the park, we have that one best rally that's coming up in the fall. I mean, there's just numerous things that we could do. The tourism board would like to encourage some more, some more outside money in. And the, you know, Downtown Christmas, I mean, all that stuff, it costs money to advertise, and $300, I mean, if anybody knows anything about advertising, that's a drop in the bucket. You know, and so by us being able to up this, it gives us a little bit more leeway, and we can help encourage some of that, some of that tourism.
Is it not $600, not 300?
It's currently 600.
Okay, I'm sorry, is it 600?
Also, the restrictions on nonprofit organizations that are doing a fundraiser, where they're trying to raise money.
If it's not tourism money, they're not going to, I mean, this is a tourism commission, and it has to bring in outside money.
But the restrictions on fundraisers, nonprofit organizations that are doing a project for fundraiser, and they're coming to tourism for money.
If they're not going to bring, if they can come, all they want, but if they're not going to bring in outside money and be able to prove that there's a reasonable chance of bringing outside money, they're not going to get funded. So the local ban, unfortunately, is a civic deal, it's not a tourism, it's not a project for the tourism commission. You know, so obviously, they're not going to get the money. You know, it's got, the basic criteria is they've got to bring in outside money. You know, they've got to prove that there's more likelihood of them bringing in outside money in, which follows the definition of tourism.
Because I was probably one of them that started, requested some kind of a limit. We had a fundraiser, a nonprofit organization, I was raising funds, and they came to, and it was pretty much unlimited at that time. What I'm afraid is that you have so many organizations that can come do that, and then you have to be, if they come in and are approved to somewhat, they're bringing in outside people, where do you stop it at?
Well, you, that would simply.
Yeah, well, then you're picking and choosing, and that's not what we're supposed to be.
But that's, that's kind of our job, is to pick and choose. I, we have to determine, first of all.
I would like to see a little bit more, a little bit more to it than.
There's a timeframe in which they have to apply to make, to make the budgets, and I mean, there's a little bit of first time comes first serve. We only have, you know, 5% of the hotels, 5% tax from the hotels that fund this, and there's only a finite amount. So, I mean, once that money's gone, that money's gone. I mean, it's pretty simple, you know, and if they get in there and it's a, it's a good project, and we think they're going to bring in some more money, then the board will approve it, but it's got, money's got to be there. If there's no money, it gets cut off. As simple as that.
Sounds like you would like to be in a position where there's so many requests, you have to pick and choose.
Right.
And as opposed to having it on the table.
Right, because, I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to have so many projects out there that we're bringing in tourism money left and right. That would help out the city tremendously. You know, we have, we have very little tourism in this town right now. So, I mean, if we had, you know, if we had 500 requests, I mean, it just means, that's better for the, for the business community.
Right, I have a question, because I heard you say 300, and then I got 600. Is it at 300 going to 600?
No, I misspoke. I thought it was at 300. It's currently, it's 600, and we're going to keep it 600 for a one-day event.
Okay.
Because obviously, they're not, that's, will affect hotels, or restaurants and stores, but it's not a big project. 2,000 would affect, would affect more.
Multi-day.
More businesses.
So that's the change, is the 2,000?
Right. That's the, that's the big change.
What is the, what is, is there a level, and who determines the level of outside money? And I know that's all, I mean, we have, it seems like every other weekend, there's a 5K race, a nonprofit that is probably running the outside, runners from outside this to the town.
And that's why, that's why we have a tourism commission, so that we can, you know, there's, yeah, we can evaluate each one on an individual basis and determine which one's going to be more profitable to us. I know, it's all about, we want to bring more money into the city. You know, if something, something works out, or doesn't work out one year, they're not going to get it the next year. You know, I mean, obviously, you know, there's, you don't have any guarantees in the tourism business, but we, enough of us have been around this business for a while that we have a little bit of educated guess.
Right.
So that's kind of the deal.
And I apologize, I was out of town. I am the alderman assigned to the tourism, or tourism commission, and I was out of town on vacation at this meeting. But, you know, I think that for the most part, we establish these committees and we trust their judgment on these, and was this a, for like, a unanimous decision amongst the, amongst the tourism?
It was unanimous.
So do we as a board, you make a motion to approve the change in the guidelines?
Yes. I'd make a motion to approve the changes to the nonprofit and fundraising limits, changing the maximum for a multi-day event to $2,000 and the single-day event to $600.
Second? My question is, on multi-day, is that two or more is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. A one-day, 600, two or more, 2,000.
Yes.
Mr. Shell Harvey?
John, if I could add something to your, I know you guys have been talking about, you know, us determining and making decisions on who fits what, and, one of the things in there, if you'll notice, it says if it becomes, if it's something that becomes big enough, and a year-to-year thing, then we can put it as a budget item.
Right.
Just like we used to do with Catch the Globe.
Catch the Globe.
Or something like that. So then it becomes a standalone issue.
Okay.
So, you know, that kind of takes some of the.
The decision, the arbitrariness out of.
So, yeah.
Any other discussion? There's a motion on the floor from Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark. There's a motion on the floor from Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Hock to approve the tourism funding requirements for nonprofits and fundraising policy change to $600 for a one-day event, with a maximum of 2,000 for a multi-day event. Did I say that right?
You did say that right.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Now.
No.
Wait a minute, we're out of money. This is not something you have to decide on tonight. In the last, the last Tourism Commission meeting, one of the issues that came up was fireworks. As you know, in the past, we've tried to work hand-in-hand with the fair board on their fireworks display. We had to do, in the past, we budgeted $5,000, up to $5,000, to help the fair board do their, and then they would have to match 5,000, so. And, of course, a couple years ago, we didn't, it didn't happen that way. This year, they didn't have a fireworks display, and I don't know if you were out in the public much afterwards, but the city was also catching heat about it. I caught, you know, several people said, well, how come you're on the tourism commission, how come they didn't pick up the ball when the fair board decided not to have a fireworks display? Unfortunately, we didn't know until the very last minute that they wasn't doing fireworks. We had budgeted $10,000 in the hopes that if the fair did want to continue to have the fireworks display, they could, you know, we would match them up to their $10,000, and put on a $20,000 display, and have, you know, a bigger and better one, hopefully. It didn't happen, so we kind of kicked it about a little bit, and come to the conclusion that maybe the city should take it over. The Tourism Council has money budgeted in there, if the city would want to budget some more, we've got the athletic fields out there, the athletic complex, we could have it at. So it's just something, like I said, you know, probably not a decision tonight, but it's something that needs to be made fairly quick, because I think those fireworks companies and everything, they book, you know, pretty early. So, again, it's not something, the decision you need to make tonight, but it's something we felt like we needed to bring in, bring in to you all, and see what, I know maybe the city doesn't want to get in the fireworks display, but a lot of cities around us sponsor them, and.
Joe, Mike, I think one of the challenges is, and when I saw this, I started thinking about a way to, I'm not a fireworks guy, that doesn't mean that others aren't, or shouldn't be, but how do we, how do we use that $10,000 or that $20,000 to draw people in more than 15 minutes before dark, and then they leave town at the end of the day? And then you come up with the question of, how do we do it without competing with the fair? Because you don't, you don't want to, so, I guess I would, I would be interested in some brainstorming of how do we actually use those fireworks dollars to make it an event that maybe will draw people to the restaurants? Maybe they spend the night, maybe it's a festival or something, but if the fair's always going to be centered around July 4th, I can see that being an issue, it's just a...
Well, and one thing, we want to, we don't necessarily want to cut the fair out.
Right.
We want to talk to them and find out if they are in fact going to do it in the future, or if there are limited funds, it's not going to allow it.
Right.
So we do have to go, you know, that way, too. But I think the, the thing is, yeah, if we could make it, I know years ago, and I think it was the Lions, and maybe in cooperation with the city, used to have a deal where they would give away a trailer load of bicycles that afternoon. They would have a barbecue and everything going on out there at the Lions Club, and they'd give away 100 bicycles, probably. And so that brought in, you know, so if we could go back to something like that, maybe that, maybe that's an approach to take. Right now, yeah, we don't have the answers, a brainstorming thing might be. But like I said, we, we want to find out, first of all, if the fair is going to try to continue, or if not, and I have not yet, I've not been in contact with anybody from the fair board yet either, but, like I say, it's not something to...
Yeah, I wonder, Mr. Mayor, if we could consider turning the project idea over to Dottie, who is the recreational director, and maybe Michelle, does economic development, to kind of brainstorm how we could use this as a resource for bringing people in? Do you work around a baseball tournament, or something, and see if they can do some brainstorming to see how we can get the impact that you're requesting?
Yeah. Have a baseball tournament that draws people to town, that also may go to the fair, and...
Yeah. I think it's a resource that could be interesting.
But I do think we need to do something, there was a lot of feedback.
Man, I got a lot of feedback. Why didn't the city do fireworks? Something was...
I tell you, we weren't, well, I tell you, number one, we weren't into fireworks. And you're right, the Lions Club, along with all the, most, if not all, the organizations in the city of Warrenton and Truessdale, worked towards that, and they did it, they raised enough money the year, the year they had it, for the next year, is how it finally went. And all that money was turned over to the fair board, and it's no longer rotating there.
I would really be interested to know if the fair board was interested in partnering up on that, too. That would, that would be a big determination, in my mind, how completely we want to get involved in it, because, you know, we've been partners with them, but all of a sudden, it seems like. I know. Anyway. And you know, you know my recreation director, maybe that is something you could visit with, with Dottie on, and see what you two can come up with.
Don't say us two.
Well, I think at the next tourism meeting, at the next tourism meeting, it's something that we could have additional representation with, with your committee to brainstorm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael, last thing, are there any more concerts in the park this year?
Yes, Thursday night is Ricky Lee Tanner, he's a country artist that just came back from Nashville and cut a CD, and they were supposed to, his wife said she was going to send one to Mike Thomas at Katy Mary, they're supposed to be playing it, I don't know, I haven't been following up on that, been too busy with others.
This Thursday, near Park at?
Seven to nine.
Seven.
Be our last one. Unless it rains, we may have to move it to September or something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on item 11, request for a liquor-by-the-drink license for the hideout located at 405 East West Memorial Parkway. Anybody want to talk about that?
Is this a change, or a renewal, or?
A change in ownership.
Pardon me?
Change in ownership. Oh, okay. I think they added a partner name.
Okay. Make a motion to approve liquor license for the hideout.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Hock, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the liquor-by-the-drink license for the hideout LLC located at 405 East West Veterans Memorial Parkway. Any further discussion or concerns? Roll call, both, please.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
All, that's it.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item 12, I don't have a 12.
We need a agenda item.
Yes, none.
Didn't have any.
There's none.
You can move it. We didn't have any amended.
I'm going to go on down to item 13, our grounds and maintenance director, Brad Boosie-Cruz.
Good evening, Lord Mayor. What I have tonight are two mowers that I'd like to get out of our fleet. The first one, I think on your list, is a Toro. This one is a 2001 Toro Z Master, has approximately 3,060 hours on it. Motor is, is blown, it is out. And the second one is a 1996 Grasshopper 725. It has 2,102 hours, and I can say the motor runs, but I'm not going to say it's going to cut grass, so it does run somewhat, so. Those are the two I would like to take out and put on GUP deals.
Brad, do you think, will we be replacing these mowers, or have?
Next item.
Next item on the agenda.
Is, do you think that, have you explored a trade-in value on these at all?
When I get to the next one, I will.
Okay.
I have one question. Second, I didn't make a motion.
I have a question, on the Grasshopper, is this one with a special chartered?
The grammar seat, yes, save the knees and save the backs, yes.
Okay, are we, are we going to take that off and put it on a new?
Oh, no, these do not have, no, the ones I'm selling are, they're just.
They're just.
Run metal.
Okay.
Right. The old style.
And you want to list these on the government?
GUP deals, yes, where we sell all our vehicles and stuff at.
Motion to approve the sale of the pieces of equipment as described by Brad. Second?
Motion by Alderman Hock, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the items for sale from the direct recommendation of grounds and maintenance director. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise? Motion carried six-zero.
Next, I would like to purchase two Grasshopper 329 units from Mort Tractor, and I guess the, the budget for these was $18,000. There's a difference of $4,262, and this was from, we had had two of them that we were going to trade in, that were a little bit better, but as it came out, these two went down before that, so we are opting to, on the, on my capital item, I have, I had a salt spreader for the new truck that we're looking about purchasing, we're going to take that out of the equation, because we need the mowers more than we need the salt spreader at this time. So that was where my, we had budgeted 4,000, I think it was around $4,500 for trade-in for two of them that we were going to, but we're going to have to hold those in our fleet at this time, till we get through next year.
So you're, you're looking to buy two new ones?
Yes, that's what it was, I asked about budget, it was two new ones, and we had budgeted 18, and plus the 4,500 for trade-in, but at this time, we're going to have to hold those other two in.
So, so the bid assist price here, the 11,131?
Yes, it is.
And that's, that's the total?
Times two.
Times two.
22,262.
Okay.
No sense.
Brad, what I don't see in my stuff is a spec sheet on this, as a, can you give me a little insight, is there any other machine, other than the Grasshopper, meet that?
Water-cooled, water-cooled is my main thing, they run better, we have no, very little problem with the motors on them. The air-cooled, for what we do and where we're at, just do not hold up. The Toro is one of our last air-cooled ones, or air-cooled motors that we had, and it failed, so that's why we want, we're strictly going, water-cooled, just so much better, we have better life out of them. They're just a better mower for what, I mean, we run these things seven hours a day, five days a week, I mean, non-stop, so.
And the spec sheet doesn't require a rear discharge, or?
No, these are not, these are all side discharge mowers, these are gone, they're two mid-mount, because these are the ones that are basically going to be out on the road, on the road, 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 these are going to be. And these are the ones that do the interstate, to do all the wells, I mean, these, these mowers will, they take a beating on where we have to put them, all the wellhouses, lift stations, anywhere we, you know, city hall, parks, they do everything, so. That's the reason with the air-cooled ones, just don't seem to, I mean, we'll get 1,500 hours out of them, then we're redoing the motor, so, and we, you know, we change the oil on them, ever think it's 150 hours, and, you know, do what the book says on these, and we just don't have any problems with them.
What about the gas versus diesel?
We found that the gas, if you start mixing too many, if you get a diesel mower, we have one diesel in the, in our fleet, and we've had numerous times where we've had to stop, somebody wasn't, you know, new person comes in, thinks it's gas, dumps it in there. So if we keep everything gas, our tractor's diesel, we don't have this problem. It's just better maintenance for us, and just, we don't have to be swapping, you know, diesel cans, gas cans, and stuff when, when we go out.
Is that the reason why you're staying with a mid-mount rather than a front?
We found the mid-mounts hold better on the interstate banks, the, you know, the ball field down, the Lakeview Field, the steep bank, we found the mid-mounts hold a lot better, especially interstate. The guys won't take a front mount out to interstate anymore. I, myself, I've been down the hill three times on it, backwards, they'll just break loose, and down, down you go, so. They like the mid-mounts, they don't have the problems, they, and they're, they're more compact, they don't scar the trees up, especially when we get into the woods. The, the front mounts with the big, you know, the front mount, you know, the motor's on the front, you have the back end, a lot of people don't realize when they turn, that back end's still got to come around, where the mid-mounts, when you turn, you're basically turning right inside your same spot there, just like, you know, any of them, any of the smaller ones, zero-turn ones. So that's, that's kind of why we're kind of getting away from, we might keep one or two of the older ones throughout the athletic complex on the flat ground, use those until those go bad, but we're really looking at going, because we don't have that many bushes and stuff to go underneath. The front mounts are good, cutting underneath cedar trees and stuff, we can, you know, because you can stick that front end underneath it, but everything we do now, we weed eat and cut, and we're, mid-mounts are better for us, and they fit on the trailers a lot better, too.
Any other questions for Brad?
I'm not going to be needing this flatbed truck loader this winter.
Excuse me?
We're not going to need the salt thing this winter.
This is, well, no, because I, I mean, I can, I'll make do with it, I'll use one of guys, I mean, we'll have this, we'll have the snow plow on it and my truck, but we'll make do with it, we're using it, we'll, it'll work.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation for the purchase of two mowers from Mort Tractor in the amount of $22,262.
Second?
Motion made by Alderman Hock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the equipment purchased from Mort Tractor Company in the amount of $22,262 for two, 2013 Grasshopper Model 29 through 29-61 mowers. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Anything else, Brad?
Yes, the next thing I have is to see what Charles' feelings are on the, I think up at your desk, you have the Bag Spot brochure. The, I was approached the other day about this, about putting a couple of these in our parks, and talking with some of the dog owners, it seems to be a thing that they would like to see, that's, and we do have numerous dog walkers at Binkley, Dyer, and Athletic Complex, but for now, I was wanting to see about doing one at Dyer and one at Binkley, since that seems to be where we have the most trails at, and I did some comparison on, for theirs, in the, on your brochure, on the inside, the white copy, the, in the other, the units are complete, like with the trash can, the, the bag holder, the signs, and then the T-post and everything, is, he would, he would sell them to us if we'd bought one, two, or whatever, for $229. The thing I kind of like about this, the, they come, because my first concern was the bags, if they, if they're on a roll, if the kid gets a hold of it, are we going to, well, they come two ways, they come individual, where you have, they come out one at a time, or you can put them on the roll. This, one of the, I think the only one that has, have this capability of doing both, so we can try the bags first, see how they work, and if we're not picking up a whole bunch of those, then we might switch over to the rolls, which are a little bit cheaper. The other thing is, they have a, that comes with an adoption or sponsorship sign, and this must be, I'm just going from what he said, a lot of the parks, this is a big thing for dog owners, is to have this station sponsored by the family, or their dog that passed away or something. dog that passed away or something. And the, the signs are nineteen dollars, they, they customize them to whatever we wanna say. And he said, you know, sponsorship for a year, whatever, maybe two, three hundred dollars. And, you know, that would basically pay, pay for the bags for a year or whatever. I'm not, I'm like saying, I'm not a dog owner, don't go for now. I, I see a lot of them in our parks, I pick up a lot of their ways that people don't have their bags and do. But I don't know, I just wanted to see if this is something that you all would wanna see in our parks or? Some of the other comparable ones that we've found close to it was Zero Waste, which is basically the same, kinda the same system except for the, the dispenser, and theirs are, run two hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
I was thinking, Brad, you know, twenty years ago on council, we used to deal with chickens and cows in town, and now we're talking about buying bags to pick up waste from animals. I don't know if this is a sign of progress or this is a sign of regression, but certainly is a change what we used to have.
I'm kinda giggling up here because I know my in-laws are talking to the city about a memorial for my, my father, and please don't do this. This is, this would be-
With your dad's name on it?
Yeah, this would be really wrong. But I do like the idea. My only concern, Brad, is, is the problem we have with the kids up there destroying things. I mean, I, I would like to believe that our juveniles and even our adult juveniles would leave this alone. I just don't know if they would, so.
They would be out, and, and, because that was my question, I said, you know, in your dealings with the other ones, how much vandalism or done to them? He said, well, majority of them put them right out by, by the road, right where they come into the park, so it's very visible.
Okay.
So if anybody's messing with it, somebody's gonna see them, the police come through, you know, somebody's, somebody's gonna, I would hope somebody would see them and call nine-one-one or something, so.
So the, the best way that he thought was to do the individual bags and not the rolls?
Yes, and he said, try that first, see how it goes, and once the news wore off, then you can go to the bags. Our, a lot of people like the individual bags because when you, they're just a little bit better than the pull-off ones.
I mean, I don't have a problem with us trying this.
No, I don't either.
I mean, I, I thought Dyer and Binkley, too, that we have the most people that like bring, like to bring their dogs, especially Binkley, they kinda let them run, run around up there, so.
Do we have program, I mean, do we have dollars in the budget for that?
Yes, I have that for mine.
You can put it in front of my house?
We just let the grass grow, no one will know.
Then you cut the grass and you step it.
So you're talking, you want approval for two of those?
Do I need approval there? I, sure, might as well. Okay, for two of them?
Do, do we have any ordinance in effect for pet owners being responsible for their
waste?
Yes.
Okay, we do.
Do they do?
But instead of like this station at two hundred and something, why not put signs, some signage up that says, you know, that we have an ordinance and you're responsible for picking up your dog's waste?
Do we have that?
We have signs up.
Yeah.
Do you?
Yep, have signs up at all of our parks.
I think this is just a convenience for people to, you know, a handy little convenience for people walking their dog.
They're very common in the city.
Pretty common in the parks.
Pretty much.
Dog parks are getting more.
Yeah, I also see people take a whole bunch of them.
I need a motion if, to approve this purchase, if you're interested in going that way.
Brad, do we want it? Do we want to maybe put this out there someplace to see if someone will adopt this?
Well, if we can get them and they, the signs are only nineteen dollars, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, we can do that.
To adopt for the bags, yeah.
This is a great opportunity for you to make a motion to approve this, subject to not allowing your father's name to-
Yeah, that's about right. Must put some flowers on it.
So what do you want to do on the pet station, support?
Make a motion to go forward with the project as Brad described.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dyer to go forward with the grounds and maintenance recommendation on the waste bags per dog. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close likewise.
Aye.
Motion carried five to one.
The only other thing I have, what Mike said, the concert in the park tomorrow night, be our last one, seventy-nine, Dyer Park.
Tomorrow night?
Thursday night, I'm sorry, Thursday night. And we had some talk about, about the rain, maybe moving it to the pavilion next door. We're, we're not sure how that's gonna work. If it does rain, we might do that, but there's some issue with the manager, so.
Okay.
What does that say?
Brad, will you get that on the website, please? Will you get this information on the website about adopting these when you get them in?
Michelle Melody, you got that?
Looking it up.
That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Item fourteen on the agenda is Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Financial Officer.
Um, the first thing I have for you this evening is the recommendations from the tourism meeting that was held on July twenty-third. There was one item for approval at that meeting, which is, was a request from China House Buffet, and it was for the reimbursement for the interstate attraction signs. The original request was four hundred dollars, tourism recommended six hundred dollars. They had changed when they approved their budget. For this current fiscal year, they had changed the recommended amount for these tourism signs to six hundred dollars, because it actually cost the owners, I believe, twenty-four hundred dollars to have these out there. So they felt like the six hundred dollar amount was a better reimbursement for that. So the request for approval is China House Buffet for six hundred dollars for the interstate attraction sign.
So moved. Second. Let me, let me make sure I'm on board here. Have, have they been paid four hundred or ready?
No, they've not been paid anything.
Okay, all right.
So this is out of the tourism budget?
Yes.
For China House Buffet?
Yes.
Understood. Alderman Ock, you make that motion?
Yes.
Alderman Clark, seconded to approve the six hundred tourism recommendations for China House Buffet.
I, is this something we typically do, signs for individual restaurant owners in town?
These are the ones that are out on the interstate?
Yeah. Oh, on the plaque.
And we've been doing it, this is probably the-
No, that makes sense, I'm sorry, I'm thinking signs, and I'm trying to figure out why we would do an individual sign, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Um, the only other thing I have for you under operational updates is Guy had requested that I just let you know, we've had a lot of complaints about asphalt and rocks on the roadway, particularly, I think, out on forty-seven where the work's being completed. He is in contact with the MODOT representative and the contractor who's working on that project, and they were there this morning doing some cleanup of that, and he will continue to work with them. But just to let you know, if you get complaints, that it is the MODOT contractor, and if they'll call those complaints in, our public works department will work with them to get that cleaned up.
Terry, I want to pass on a complaint while we're discussing that. I believe it was Saturday night, they staged their equipment on the vacant lot area of Lake Chateau subdivision, and then they poured asphalt that night. One of the issues was, as they brought their vehicles in and out, they would pull their vehicle into Lake Chateau, pulled into a private driveway, concrete driveway, and backed out. They, they did that several times to turn around, and this gentleman takes great care and power washes his concrete driveway on a frequent basis, and there is asphalt and tar, tire tracks on that. And I understand that Ross Construction has a job to do, but part of their job is to make sure that they don't leave a footprint when they're done doing it.
I will pass that along to Guy and ask him to follow up with his contact person on that.
Third house on the left, off of forty-seven on Villa Duchin.
Third?
Yep.
That's all I have, see you then.
Okay, any, any questions for the terms for Terry? We're gonna move on. I got item fifteen, Gabrielle Curry, Finance Manager.
Good evening. The first item is the claims report for the invoices that affect the fiscal year in June thirty, two thousand thirteen. I'm requesting approval of those invoices, which total sixty-two thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and forty-two cents.
Motion for approval, claims report?
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dyer for the fiscal year-end approval of six thirty thirteen in the amount of sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and forty-two cents. Am I right on that amount?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Okay, and then the next item is the claims report for the July invoices. On page four, it lists the invoices that were added since Friday. So the amount that I'm requesting for these is two hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
Make a motion for the approval of the July claims report?
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the July two thousand thirteen invoices in the amount of two hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
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 Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one abstention.
The next item I have is a request to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and close Walton Street from forty-seven to Cole on September fourteenth from eight to five for the Auto Fest. And there should be, you should have an attachment that actually shows.
This has been a pretty popular event. I know they, they did it last year, I'm not sure how many years prior.
It's, it's popular unless it rains.
Unless it rains, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it is a popular event.
I make a motion to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and Wal- Walton Street from Highway forty-seven to Cole on September fourteenth, eight to five for the Auto Fest.
Second. Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the request to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and close Walton Street from Highway forty-seven to Cole Street on September fourteenth, from eight to five P.M. for the Auto Fest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one abstention.
The next item I have is a request to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and close Walton Street from forty-seven to Cole on September fourteenth from eight to five for the Auto Fest. And there should be, you should have an attachment that actually shows.
This has been a pretty popular event. I know they, they did it last year, I'm not sure how many years prior.
It's, it's popular unless it rains.
Unless it rains, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it is a popular event.
I make a motion to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and Wal- Walton Street from Highway forty-seven to Cole on September fourteenth, eight to five for the Auto Fest.
Second. Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the request to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and close Walton Street from Highway forty-seven to Cole Street on September fourteenth, from eight to five P.M. for the Auto Fest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
The next item that I have is a request to close Main Street from Troy Road to Morgan Street, Main Street to Alley on Thurman Street, North Morgan from Main Street to Oak, and Oak Street from Morgan to West Street, and West Street from Oak to Main on September fourteenth from six to nine for the ride run.
The, the only thing I request is make sure we let those businesses know.
Yes.
I remember last year, they were unhappy because they didn't know about it in advance, so.
I don't know what the ride run is.
It's where they actually go from the car show and they circle downtown.
That's what riding, yeah.
They, they, they left the-
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dyer to read, approve the request to close Main Street from Troy Road to Morgan Street, Main Street to Alley on Thurman Street, North Morgan from Main to Oak Street, Oak from Morgan to West Street, and West Street from Oak to Main on September fourteenth, six to nine P.M. for ride run. Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one abstention.
The next item I have is a request to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and close Walton Street from forty-seven to Cole on September fourteenth from eight to five for the Auto Fest. And there should be, you should have an attachment that actually shows.
This has been a pretty popular event. I know they, they did it last year, I'm not sure how many years prior.
It's, it's popular unless it rains.
Unless it rains, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it is a popular event.
I make a motion to close Cole Street from Walton to Voschel and Wal- Walton Street from Highway forty-seven to Cole on September fourteenth, eight to five for the Auto Fest.
Second. Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the request to Motion by Alderman Castorley, second by Alderman Flank, to approve the request to close Cole Street from Walton to Volshoe and close Walton Street from Highway forty-seven to Cole Street on September fourteenth from eight to five P.M. for the Auto Fest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Preston Castorley?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
The next item that I have is request to close Main Street from Troy Road to Morgan Street, Main Street to Alley on Thurman Street, North Morgan from Main Street to Oak, and Oak Street from Morgan to West Street, and West Street from Oak to Main on September fourteenth from six to nine for the rod run.
The only thing I requested, make sure we let those businesses know.
Yes.
I remember last year, they were unhappy because they didn't know about it in advance, so.
I don't know what the rod run is.
It's where they actually go from the car show and they circle downtown.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, second by Alderman Dreyer, to approve the request to close Main Street from Troy Road to Morgan Street, Main Street to Alley on Thurman Street, North Morgan from Main to Oak Street, Oak from Morgan to West Street, and West Street from Oak to Main on September fourteenth, six to nine P.M. for rod run. Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Preston Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Farmer's Market update.
Yes. Basically, I have provided you with the report showing each of the eight weeks that we were open, what the number of shoppers and vendors were, and just some of the comments that we had. I've also provided you with the expenses to date and the revenue, primarily the expenses. As you can see there, it's a lot of, mostly just marketing of the event, and then the part-time salary. You know, the revenue, I guess we're not really, we're not trying to make money on it. So, I kinda hesitated to put that on there, but I just wanted you guys to be able to see exactly what we're doing financially with it. And this week, the market was a little better attended. There was probably sixty to seventy people who attended it. But when I was putting this together and looking at the numbers, and I'm looking at the number of shoppers that we've had total in eight weeks, the number of vendors that we have, and all of those vendors aren't even showing up, as you can see, you know, we've only had up to six vendors at most in one, in any given week. So, when I started looking at that, it just seems like we're, you know, using an awful lot of resources for an event or program that seems to not really be reflecting very good on the city. The vendors are upset because they would like for us to spend more time doing marketing. I listed here for you all the marketing that I've done. Could we do more? Sure, we could do more if we wanna put more money into it, but probably more importantly is if we wanna put more time into it. I don't really feel like, for the amount of people that it's affecting, that we really should spend any more staff time trying to promote an event that over the course of the years has proven not to be very successful. So, my recommendation is, based on the information I looked at, that we would discontinue the market effective. I actually had August third on here, but I realized just a while ago that that day has already passed. So, it would actually be this week, August tenth. However, I'm up to suggestions, recommendations, and we'll continue to support it, whatever you guys decide.
Dottie, you know, as I look at this, my only issue with, I understand the hesitation to invest any more assets in marketing if it doesn't seem to be working. That being said, we went from zero shoppers one week to two, to fifteen, to five, to thirty, to sixty, to sixty, to thirty. Some of the tomatoes, corn, stuff like that is finally coming in and being available. I just don't know about, if you've got vendors that are asking for more marketing, if we're not gonna do that, I just don't know about pulling the carpet out from under them in the middle of the season. I think that when we set the, the season, we committed to having this market open for that long, and I'm hesitant to yank it out from under them as long as we do have vendors that have planned on selling on those days, are showing up to sell on those days, and it seems like our attendance is starting to improve. And maybe we reevaluate it for next year.
Yeah, I agree with John. You know, the question is, what does success look like? But, you know, it's, I mean, you see some increased numbers, you're almost at the end of the season. I would think that we should just carry on. I don't know what the end of the season looks like. Is that, what date is that?
October.
October.
October?
Actually, I think it's through the end of September.
I mean, if we see, if we see numbers significantly dropping, well, I would think, let's just continue it on and finish our commitment. That's my perspective on it.
I think your produce is now coming in. I mean, for months it didn't have anything to sell.
So, a question there.
Could, could location be a problem?
I think so. I've always thought that.
Well, I know up in Hawk Point, you know, the filling station at the corner of forty-seven and B is, I mean, that's high visibility, and if anything is there, people stop, so.
Yeah, I ponder my head where, where we would.
And, you know, times have changed, but I remember when we had a thriving farmer's market on Saturday mornings on the back parking lot of what is now by the Missouri Extension Center. So, but this location just, you have to plan to go there. You're not gonna drive by and go, hey, there's, there's a farmer's market, and I'm invested in it.
Great facility.
Yeah.
I mean, it's got, you know, good shade and restrooms and stuff. So, what I'm hearing, to make sure we're all on the right page, wanna finish the market up for this year and maybe take a year off next year?
What's, why should I make a decision?
Make a decision this winter?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's fine with you, Dottie?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
What else you got?
Actually, that's all that I have.
You're done?
Yes.
Thank you. I got item number eighteen, discussion of proposed transportation development district. Couple things I wanted to mention here before we get started on that. I'm probably gonna ask Councilor Greville to give us a little update on what happened in the courtroom the other day. And we've extended an invitation to the petitioners, why I'm at district, if they would like to come forward and address the board. We're hesitant about getting involved in a filibuster or anything, but we do wanna hear what you have to say. And hopefully, we can keep our remarks for ten or fifteen minutes on it. So, Councilor Greville, would you bring the board up to date on what happened in the, our public hearing last week in the courthouse?
Absolutely, Mayor. As most of the public and the board knows, we filed this TDD petition, I think, February, I think, somewhere. We filed the petition in February. It's being heard by the Honorable Stanley Williams out of Franklin County. He's the judge on the case. And basically, what happens if you, you have, the notice is very specific in that you want the notices in the paper for the hearing to be ran at a certain time and as close in time to the hearings themselves. So, Friday, July twenty-six, as the notice set forth, it was set for basically the hearing on the TDD. It wasn't really a hearing, it was really just the first appearance with Judge Williams on it. And there were some petitioners, there was a petitioner who filed a protest under the statute. There were some other people that filed some documents with the court regarding their protest to the statute, and then obviously, I reported that back to the Director of Operations who reported to you, Mayor, and the board. So, that's where it's at. And we have it set for, I think, August twenty-third at one-thirty, one o'clock, for hearing on the declaratory judgment regarding the petition.
And that would appear back in front of the same judge?
Judge Stanley Williams, correct.
Okay. At this time, if any of the petitioners wanna address the board, I would ask, I know I cut Elmer off early, if you would like to come forward again, and we'll start over again. And give us your name again.
Okay. My name is George Ebly.
George.
And I'm associated with Western Oil. We have the Petromart store on, on seven-fifteen North, our Highway forty-seven. I'm very much against it. I wanna ask you to reconsider. I don't know exactly what the board is trying to achieve, or the city's trying to achieve. I know that you have a outlet mall down here, you'd like to rejuvenate, and I guess you think that's gonna work, and I don't know that that will. But what concerns me is that when this was filed, we never heard anything about it. We wasn't consulted, we wasn't confided in, we wasn't invited to anything about, you know, business, business community is very important, I think, or it should be. So, I think I was a little put out about that. I didn't like not being, at least being advised what you're doing. And then, I think it's fifteen million dollars worth talking about spending, and raising half of it in the city. That's seven and a half million. That's a lot of money. And you're using part of the city as a conduit to collect it. While I'm in that district, that does give me a disadvantage. And I think we've talked to a lot of other business people, and that's a big disadvantage to them more than me. We don't have the volume that some businesses do. We talked to Walmart. Walmart says they don't wanna get involved in a city issue, but they're against it as far as they're, the people we've talked to, they don't like the idea. One thing that's happened, this was tried and done in Troy. I think you all know about that. And they passed an issue like that, and then Walmart threatened to leave, and they rescinded it. We don't wanna chase Walmart out. I think Walmart's important to the community. It's not the best thing for small business, but it's, it's here, and they do a lot of business, and it's an attraction. People come from all over to shop there. So, I don't wanna, you know, that, that would affect us right there, and really affect you guys and the whole city. I mean, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to build an overpass down there that really doesn't go anywhere, that I can see. I mean, it's gonna be there, it's gonna go right into the outlet mall. Maybe that's what your intentions are. But I don't know, if it doesn't work, we spent a lot of money for nothing. And if we lose business over it, how are you gonna pay for it? You know, I've watched proceedings here this evening, and it all comes down to how we're gonna finance the city and how we're gonna run the city. But we've got this district drawn, that seemed like there're thirteen or fourteen people get to vote. But all the, all the people live, seventy-five, eighty, seventy-five to eighty thousand people live here, and we all have to pay that. They have to pay that. They're gonna shop with us, they're gonna shop with Walmart, and they're paying that, and they don't have anything to say about it. That just doesn't seem like the American way to me. I know it's, I've checked, it's legal. I'm sure you've done your homework. But think about that. Fourteen respective voters get to tell you how we're gonna spend seven and a half million dollars for the next thirty years with the interest rates. Municipal bonds are out there now four and a half to five percent. You know what five percent of seven and a half million is? I know you figured that. Another question I have, have you studied the program? Have you studied what it's gonna do to the rest of businesses? Let me give you an example. If I was Mosers, the riding district, or Kroger's, I'd get me a sign, and I'd advertise one percent less, shop here forever. You can save one percent by going to Mosers. Is that gonna help Walmart? Is that gonna be a good thing? So, you haven't even, you haven't even included all the business people in the city. I wonder about that. I've only been here for about a year and a half. I'm brand new to the city. We like our location, we do very well there. But about a year ago, we had a drought. And I was asked, no, I take it back, I was told, to stop using the car wash. Very good, I understand totally, we're out of water. I went down to the city hall, I said, how long is that gonna be? They said, well, we're not sure. Could be a week, could be a month. They asked me, how long is the drought gonna last? I said, you got a very good point. I don't either. I don't know how it's gonna last. So, we shut our car wash down, other people did, that's fine. The people are more important than my car wash, believe that. That's fine with me. I'll do it. You say do it tomorrow for a reason, say. But I asked the city, the folks I talked to, what's wrong with the water? Well, we've got a, our wells aren't deep enough. We got a problem with one of the wells. We don't have the tankage. We're running out of water. Would a TDD or something like that be better used to keep the city in water? I heard a little bit about a water situation here tonight. About truth teller, what are we doing? I mean, wouldn't we be better off to spend a few bucks? The man told me, when the water went down, we don't have the money to fix it. I know how to get the money to fix it. Change that petition. Don't put a bridge that doesn't go anywhere. Let's get a better water district. If you guys got questions, I just don't understand why we're, we're doing this with that small vote. I don't understand why we weren't included. Now, we're included, and we've already filed a petition. I know the city has spent a lot of money to do this. But why don't we have some conversations or some meetings and some things? And there's a lot of people in the city who don't even know this is going on. Talked to a lot of folks that live here. They go, what TDD? So, I wonder, how much have we advertised this? I know you're going through MoDOT. I read the petition. I've called MoDOT about this. They're not aware of exactly what's going on. I'm sure your counsel has probably talked to them, but the people that I've talked to don't know exactly what's going on. Their comment to us, we don't really have discretionary spending right now for that. But it may be, it may be something they'll do. With all the problems MoDOT's got, I can't believe they got seven and a half million dollars to spend on that overpass that really doesn't go anywhere, in our opinion. I've never, I've been a business for fifty years. I've never protested anything in my entire life. But the way the economy's going and the way the government's going, local, state, and federal, I'm starting to get more excited about saying things. If you don't have the money, my dad always told me, you can't spend it. If we don't have the money, don't bother at all. Is it gonna be that good for the city? You have to make that determination. In my opinion, I don't think it will be. I'd be glad to question me, why I feel this way. We got a good business, we love it there. I think we operate a nice, clean business, and we're glad to be here. But I just wonder about this, this petition.
Do you have other stores besides this one?
Yes.
Are any of those stores in a taxing district like that?
Yes, they are. I've never, I'm in eleven different TDDs right now. I've never got into a TDD that I haven't been inviting. And consult. And I served one of eleven boards.
Did you build, was the TDD already in place when you built into the TDD, or were you already establishing the TDD was?
No, I was already established, except for one place, and that's Crete Car. I did not, I, I happened to initiate that one. And they were, what they were doing in Crete Car, and that's, that's a pretty active one right now, is they were burying utility lines, putting new sidewalks in. It's all about widening roads and stuff like that. But it's, every TD that I've been into, Union Missouri, all of them, they're always over budget. We started at four and a half million, we're now at six. Now, it's looking good, but way over budget. To build an overpass for fifteen million, that's gonna be tough. I mean, you read, you research that, you see exactly the number. But if you lose patrons, if you lose business people, you can't, and you don't have that revenue coming in, what are you gonna do? I know you can do this without MoDOT. I mean, if, I mean, petition is, if I read it right, you could pass this, and if MoDOT says, no, we don't have fifty percent funding, you guys could decide to do it yourself. I hope you don't do that.
Yeah, let me make a comment. I think one of the issues that has come up, and I've been doing a lot of reading about this, I called the Public Administrator in Wentzville and talked to various other people, and I said, when your TDDs came in, did you have the issues with the business people that weren't his experience? And the explanation to me was typically when a TDD is formed, the businesses within the district get together and petition for the TDD. So, for example, the businesses on Highway forty-seven would say, you know, if we can improve the intersection over the highway, we, as a business, will agree to take a tax on and say, you know, from a marketing perspective, we are more than willing to charge our customers more for this benefit. And Daughter's report on TDDs that the state of Missouri put out, there was forty-four listed, and then only one of them was the city the one who initiated. All the other districts were initiated by the property owners within the district. And another example, in my mind, how this should work is, let's say we want to enhance the outlet center, and we believe that access and egress to the outlet center is important. What I would think should, is happen in the other towns, is that you own the outlet center, and maybe some adjacent businesses feel like their market is gonna be improved significantly because of a TDD and an access that will increase their market share. So, they're willing to stand up and say to the public, if you wanna shop with us, you're gonna have to pay one percent. you're going to have to pay 1% more, and that's the price," but they feel from a marketing perspective that interstructure is what allows them to say that. And I think the pushback on here is that the business owners were not approached to form the TDD. This was a TDD imposed on the businesses as opposed to the business owners getting together and saying, "This is what we lack." And it doesn't have to be business owners. You could have, for example, the residents on Milltown Road and Briar getting together with the business owners, males over here, and saying, you know, "We're having a hard time getting out of our intersection. We believe if we came together as our own TDD and made some road changes that would help our access and egress to the homes, it would help businesses get cars back and forth," and that's how these typically work. And I think that's why the administrator from Wentzville said that's why they don't get the pushback on this, because it's initiated within the district, being formed by the owners who made the investment. And I think that's part of the big problem here.
Gary, absolutely right, but the thing about it is, when they initiate these things, they go get people volunteers. "Will you help? Will you put your business in it? It's a half a cent sales tax, will you get in it? I think it's a good idea." And they discuss it, and they bring it to people. We didn't see that here.
Right.
I didn't know anything about it until two weeks ago.
Right.
You've already filed a petition. Where did, did I miss the memo, or did I miss the letter? Did you forget where I was at? I got a tax bill. My tax bill's $32,000 a year. You don't miss that. What's going on?
One of the things I have to tell you, this is all new to us. We've never, I don't think anybody on this board's ever been involved in this process before. Been going on for probably two and a half years now that we've been working on it, before my time and probably most of the people on this board's time. So, we were kind of somewhat lost how to go about it, so we had to hire people to lead us, and we make mistakes, obviously. Maybe they led us in the wrong direction.
I tell you what, communication is so wonderful. Without that, though, we can't, I mean, I would have loved, I mean, there's a lot of people here in business, they have a lot of input. Tell you how to do it, how to make everybody happy. It seems like it's, when it's their idea, it's a good idea.
Absolutely.
So, let's make it a good idea, but we didn't have that opportunity. We're getting this crammed down our throat, and that's the rough part, that's the bad part. And we're the conduit to collect it. Wow, wow, how'd that work?
In our defense, I also have to ask, when we would have a public hearing, a work session to discuss that, one of the things we were amazed at, when we looked around, there was nobody here. And pretty soon you think, "Does no one care? Are we the only ones that want to ...?"
You got their attention now.
Yeah, but it's not a brand new idea.
We're going to wait and hit it, though. It's a brand new idea for us.
It was publicized in public meetings and public hearings, correct?
But when did you go to the business community with it? Did you send us a letter? Did you? We don't always read your warrants and papers now. You have to understand.
We can't argue that. As I said, obviously, we made some mistakes.
Well, let's see if we can, you know, I'd love to work with you, I mean, I think you need to think about it, but if you can't segregate this business and that, and this one out just because you say so, because you're going to make some mail. And, you know, look at Troy. They threatened to leave and go to Moscow Mills, and they took the tax away. That made Troy look terrible.
And to go to another one of the points, and I think this was the same point brought out by the Bradshaw letter that we all have a packet at, is something, and when I talk to people who are not business people in this, who either didn't know about this and first find out about it, their overwhelming comment is exactly what you said, is that how can the board sit here and justify having 13 or 14 people impose a tax on a district that is the major shopping area for the city of Warrenton and not give the opportunity for the other 8,000 people to have a voice in that?
That's just not the American way.
And I know I was probably mock blaspheming when I brought that up, but I think that's a very serious issue.
That's one of the things that really gets me going. I'm 14 people, control 8,000.
If we sit here and say, "We're the voice of the people," well, then the people need to be able to speak, you know, and I just, I think that point is very valid.
I would bring up one thing, though. I understand where you're coming from, Gary, but that is the nature of the TDD. I would be interested in knowing what the voter size is of these other various TDs in other areas, because my understanding of the TDD, you draw the boundaries of it as narrow as possible by statute to only include those properties that would be directly impacted by the TDD. And then, the people within those boundaries are the ones that vote. This is nothing new.
Well, no, it's not, John. I mean, this is, this is a, here.
Why did you draw the district with nobody? So, you can make that decision by yourself.
No, if we, I believe.
No, but here's the distinction, John.
Can I finish? And I'm not trying to anger you, I'm, I'm trying to hash this out. I certainly can't, if the business community feels like they were cut out of this decision in more communicated way, you know, I think the city has certainly done that in the past. We talked about it this time last year with the rod run, not involving the business community in decisions that directly affected them. Shouldn't we have communicated directly with some of the businesses? Maybe. I wasn't on the board when that occurred.
I think there's other people, and I'm not going to talk to you about it, and I'll see what they say.
Can I answer John's question?
I thank you for your time, I already do. You're not angering me. I'm just frustrated with the fact that it seems like there's 8,000 people in town and 14 people get to vote.
But if we let everybody vote, that's not a TDD, that's a sales tax.
That's what you got.
And maybe that's what we end up with, or what we do.
You're going to end up with a sales tax, and they're going to pay for it.
But that's what I'm saying.
But they have the choice to pay.
I guess what I'm trying to put forward is, this TDD is no different than any other TDD that I am aware of, to expand it, to cover the entire city. It has been no longer a TDD, it's a sales tax, and maybe that's what we need to look at, if that's what you're.
If the city, if the people in the city want a 1% sales tax, that's fine.
Let them vote.
Let's do it, let them vote on it. That's all I ask.
John, you asked for a distinction, you'd be curious as to how many people are, and I'll pass the sheet over to you, and again, this was Exhibit A, or Amendment A to the audit report that was done in 2008 by the Missouri Auditors, and they list here 44 TDDs, and with the exception of one, the number of petitioners or voters in the district was 1, 2, 1, 2, 4, I think the highest was 6. But what is distinctive about this is the people who filed the petition, in every case, were listed as property owners within the district. And that's the distinction, I think, between what we're doing and what these TDDs and why we get pushback and they don't, because it was somebody in the district who owned the property, who had the investment.
Who owned the property.
Yeah, and who was willing to say, "This is my idea, and this is what I want to do." And I think that's the distinction.
I don't like the crap, but I just get all excited, I go, "Wait a minute, now, just a minute here, how can that be?" And then, if we lose Walmart, if for some reason, some weird reason, they decide to go to Wright City, we're going to be in a fix. I do a lot of business when people go back and forth to Walmart. Majority of the residents here live south, and they got the pass right by me to get there, and that's a pretty busy place. We don't want to lose them. So, we need to consult them and ask them, "What do they think?" And if they say it's a good idea, my gosh, it probably will be.
I believe Michelle's been in contact with Walmart, have you not?
I have talked to Walmart in the past. When I talked to Greg, he was okay with it, but he does have a concern, he talked to me about that, and like Walmart has stated, that they will not make any comments at this time, that they are going to wait and see how this plays out.
They told the same thing, they said they're staying neutral. Walgreen said the same thing.
Mr. Epple, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do some other people talk, see if anyone else wants to address the board. Good points. Anyone else like to address the board?
My name's Laurie Croninger, franchise eating Burger King. Fortunately, I own three Burger Kings that I'm kind of going to bring up today, only one here in Warrenton, Troy, and St. Clair. I was part of the TD prop, TDD process, because I was informed in Troy when that took place, I believe most of businesses were. At the time, I probably was supportive of it. The TDD spent there, I believe, was on the overpass up there to improve the overpass, get the flow going and stuff like that. I'm going to tell you now, the same thing happened there that's going to happen here when the public finds out about this. The public did not know about the TD that much in Troy. And I know George said it was Walmart, and actually Walmart did not make their comments known until after the TDD passed in Troy. That's when they stepped up and said, "Hey, we got options, we can go to Moscow Mills." I don't know if you guys know about Walmart in Troy, but they've picked up, moved three times up there. They originally were in one spot, five years later, they moved, and then blah, blah, blah. So, they actually made their demands, but also, I think, it was more public dissension there, because I personally was working in a restaurant after that passed, and I was supportive of it, but I caught a lot of flak from the customers, because they weren't aware of the fact that they were paying an extra 1%. And then, I think Troy, the TDD, was determined by 12 people up there, and I think that was really a major dissension amongst the residents up there. That's on Troy. On St. Clair, I know you guys are talking about doing the overpass situation down the road to help out the mall down there. I think that's basically what the overpass is all about, and get some additional traffic taken off this overpass. But I will tell you that they made the overpass there at St. Clair wider to get business, to get across the highway, and they've had a conceptual drawing for a major development over there for years, for a major shopping center and stuff like that, and it's still in conception. So, a lot of money was spent down there on the overpass, and there's a lot of things just sitting there, you know, and that overpass could more easily than use in somewhere like Troy, Missouri or something, or to help, you know, possibly widen this one up too, which maybe is what the TD should have been for here in the first place. As far as the TDD here, you know, I'm just, from my past experience in Troy, I think you're going to have a lot of issues with the residents here. I think Walmart will speak up later on, they did in Troy. Troy did rescind the TDD after a while. They got some of the stuff they wanted done, and some of the taxes that they had collected on that. Obviously, we widened the road up there, but we did not do anything with the overpass. So, my comments to you guys is to use some extreme caution when it comes to 12 people or 14 people making a decision upon the extra 1% that everybody else is going to spend here in town.
Don't Troy already have two overpasses entering to the town? Don't they have one?
One's under construction now.
How many do you have?
You know, the state, that was in the 10-year plan, I mean, way back, and they're just now catching up to that. The TDD there in Troy was supposed to be spent on the overpass there, and I believe for some industrial, a commerchery behind the north, the northwest corner there. And obviously, I think, if you see the roads that are sitting there, they've been empty for years because the TDD didn't continue down the path it was supposed to go. The only other comment I got is, you know, I hear you guys saying, particularly Alderman Casterly, is that how you say it? That you have a choice, but I think when you impose this, I don't think, I think the choices are very minimal at that point. We're in a convenience business, as with the other businesses, and I believe most of the businesses are within that TDD now, so if you didn't want to go to Walmart, you know, to purchase your groceries, you know, what are your other options for, you know, that type of convenience? So, same thing with the gas stations and fast food and restaurants and stuff like that, so I'm not sure what choices you'd have after that, except if you wanted to drive to Wright City or Wentzville, which I do know that there was a few people in Troy that did that, you know, they decided to drive to Wentzville due to major shopping. I know in my business, you know, it's 10 cents on a purchase maybe, with that 1%, you'd be on a $10 order. I don't know, I'm getting choked up by this. It's really not, it's really not like, you know, I had some of my past where anything. But, you know, at the end of the day, 10 cents here at my place, and 50 cents here at Walmart, you know, 30 cents at the convenience store when you go in and buy gas and you get milk, I don't think it's part of the gas purchase, but maybe. You know, that all adds up for a lot of people earning disposable incomes, too. And I know Troy and Warrenton share similar demographics, a lot of older generation people here, they're living on fixed incomes. I'm telling you, they're the biggest complainers, they're the biggest complainers I had, they pay attention to every penny they spent. And they were probably one of the loudest advocates after they were made aware of the situation in Troy, so I think you're going to have a little bit of fallout later on that you're going to deal with, too. So, a lot of things to think about here, just not the overpass necessarily, and trying to get that access to the mall, but there's a lot of things to consider here, so. I just basically had some comments, and like I said, I'm not sure where the choices will be after you impose the TDD unless you want to drive to Wentzville or Wright City, so, okay?
Any questions for, sorry? Thank you, I appreciate your comments. Anyone else want to address the board?
Hello, Mayor. David Baker with Fastlink Business Stores and Holiday Inn Hotel here in town. Here to oppose this proposed TDD, obviously for all the exact same reasons that Larry and George have mentioned, and I thank you for that, but obviously, I believe most everybody here realizes, recognizes, we have three solid, good businesses that we run here in town, and would like to continue to do that as long as we can stay in business and be competitive. The TDD is, for several reasons, we oppose. I mean, taxation without representation, it's been discussed already. We've got 14 people voting, we've got 8,000 residents, we're about to vote the public. It creates a non-competitive environment, business environment, obviously. Yeah, several grocery stores, too, at least, that'll be competitive against Walmart and What's the need for it? Has there been any studies done by the state or by any kind of engineering firms? Is there a need for a new overpass? Seven and a half, or $15 million? But there's, there's several reasons, but that's what I'm here for, is to oppose the TDD. Any questions?
David, what do you see is the, forget about the TDD, what's the biggest issue facing Warrenton right now as a city?
It would be jobs, like most all cities.
I mean, that, I'm just asking you what your opinion is.
And you feel that by spending $15 million on a bridge, it's going to go nowhere, it's going to create jobs at a mall that should be just storage units?
I don't think we're just talking about the mall, but I think, you know, I sit here, and I understand, I completely understand the points, and that you and I had a nice long conversation about this. I understand the concerns, but since I started running and campaigning for this position, and even on the meet the candidate night, everything that everybody said down the road was, "We need more jobs, we need to increase revenue, we need to increase retail sales, etc.," which all leads to, "How do we maintain our schools? How do we maintain our roads? How do we pay for the benefits that we want to bring to the city?" So, what we're struggling with as a board is how do we develop that? And I want to read you a letter here. This is from January 14th, 2005, and this is to Patty Robertson. Patty, regarding the proposed TDD on North 47, Warrenton Oil Company views the TDD proposal as a progressive method to provide the infrastructure necessary to promote economic growth on the north side of I-70 along the I-47 corridor. As you know, we currently have retail businesses along this corridor and have plans in place to raise and build our existing store, replacing the existing with a much larger state-of-the-art industry C store with gas, food, car wash. Our site plans also include a 63-room hotel, Holiday Inn Express on this site. The area is almost four acres in size with a total investment of $7 million. We view the TDD not only as a method to enhance the commercial and retail development of the north side of Warrenton, but also a tool to create an economic development zone that will enhance and grow residential development while providing adequate infrastructure, primary roads that will provide emergency services, easy access, not only to the commercial and retail development, but also the residential areas that will develop as a result of the TDD. We also believe the infrastructure improvements will result in additional new retail and commercial development, enhance existing property values, which will increase sales tax revenue, real estate tax revenues to both the city and the county, with the school district as the largest beneficiary. From Wayne Baker. Now, I have a hard time with this, because this has been out in the public, this has been in the newspapers, it has been discussed for some time, whether people chose to read the newspapers or pay attention to it till now, but it really gives me a bad feeling here, because this was a great idea when we wanted to develop that property, but now it's not a great idea for our city. And I struggle with that, because I was... And, and I struggle with that, because I was put on this board for the citizens of Warrenton. No special interest group, not that you are, but for the citizens of Warrenton. And to me, building this extra interstate overpass, which won't happen tomorrow anyway, so we need to work to build for the future, is only going to help us develop that. In addition, we were really, really pressed to pass an EEZ earlier this spring that was to develop these areas. Now, this overpass is a perfect place for that enterprise zone to start building those commercial buildings there, which wasn't an unfair advantage for any other operation when we were talking about manufacturing plants. So, I see this, and I think, you know, I don't know which way you want it, because it seems like here it's a great idea. So, why is it not a great idea now?
Well, can I address a couple of those? Alderman Casterly, the TDD in '05, to my knowledge, to the best of my knowledge, which I was not personally involved in, that obviously came from my brother Wayne, his business partner, but, you know, 47 is the main corridor, obviously, it's the main intersection in Warrenton, it's the only intersection, it's the only overpass in Warrenton. Of course, it needed, it needed to be rebuilt at the time. It only made sense, it's where all the retail is. And here, is there a need for it? Again, is there a need for another overpass, two miles down, two miles, just two miles west, when typically they're five miles apart?
The whole benefit though is to improve the growth of the city. You wouldn't have five miles apart to build the growth of the city, and we're limited as to what's in the city limits.
Right, the north side of this project's not even in the city limits, so. But that's to address, you know, your two issues there were, one, why were we before it first time? 47 is, and still is, the major overpass for Warrenton. And not really crowded, to my knowledge.
I just personally see that it's in the benefit of our community to build that additional corridor. I mean, the growth potential is there. Main Street used to be the main corridor, before 47 was the main corridor. So, I mean, the future is the future, we have to plan for that.
And the other thing, the other issue I wanted to address, or she asked me to address, was the communication. This was not communicated to us at all. Wayne reads every, he lives here, I do not, and I live in St. Clair County, and he reads every single piece of paper. He found it in Warren County, was it Warren County Record, Mary, or?
Right.
One of them. So, no, we were not involved. I mean, George has said it, Larry has said it, we're the third reason to stand up here. Alderman Ock has echoed it, you know, we were not.
Well, the only thing that I can, he was, you're not saying he wasn't aware of the TDD, but he wasn't aware of the petition in the court date and?
Right.
That is the latest.
The petition has been filed.
Right.
Right, okay, and that's in the legal notices in the back, I understand that. I spoke with Wayne about the TDD before, I know that he was aware of the TDD in this discussion, but if he wasn't aware of the legal notice, I can understand that.
Anything else for Mr. Baker? Thank you for your power, appreciate it. Do we have any other petitioners that wanna address the board?
I'm Mary Dan Miller, also with Fastenate Entities, so thank you for letting me speak to the mayor and the board. And I just wanted to say on that, on the letter that Ms. Casterly read, you know, I think, in that situation, what's different, as Gary said, the, we were not informed, you know, there wasn't a partnership with the businesses. I don't know anything about TDDs, George kinda taught me a little bit tonight, Mr. Eble did, and it does seem like it's mostly driven from the business owners trying to develop business, economic development and stuff, instead of a government entity coming to a business. And I think Wayne's letter was trying to do that, to develop that north side with the hotel and more development and stuff like that. That's really the only comment I wanna make.
Anybody, any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mary.
I just got one thing, it's informational. Does anybody wear the long-term 47 auto belt that's supposed to be coming from '44 through '70 up to '61? And it's supposed to bypass all these towns? Are you guys aware of that with MoDOT? That was in conception 10 years ago, and it's still across.
We hear those stories, but you never know if they're gonna come to life or not.
Well, when we built the store in St. Clair, we were aware of it, and actually, I probably could dig up the actual drawings that show actually where that was gonna go at the time. I haven't researched it any where since then, but I know that was in like the 10, 20-year plan at the time, and I don't know why they wanna give that up, but it's maybe something you guys wanna consider. If they're already considering putting something out here in overpass, then maybe you guys don't need to spend the money on it.
Yes.
It's just something to take a look at.
If we keep hearing the Washington Bridge is gonna come to life too, but.
They may better shop.
I just.
I do know it was a long-term plan, we built the restaurants, and that was something we had to consider, 47 outweighed the city.
I think the other thing the public should be aware of, and there was a work session scheduled on February 5th of 2013, but the work session was geared specifically for a countywide TDD, and they, they did come. But one thing the Department of Revenue Director said is that they were planning in 2014 to try to pass a 1% sales tax for the purposes of roads improvements. So, you know, the other perspective from the standpoint of people who are paying for things, if that were to come to fruition, and I was probably voted the people, also in the state, I mean, you'd have our 1%, you'd have the state's 1%, which would be a significant increase for everybody in the tax. And I just think voters need to know that that is also out there on the table, that the Highway Department is gonna recommend that to the legislature for 2014.
But they already recommended that, and it failed to make, make the legislature this year.
But it can't come back, yeah, it can't come back, but, I don't know.
Anyone else wanna address the board? Please come forward and give us your name and.
My name's Amy Bigner, I'm a housewife, have several kids. I do have a couple of questions about the overpass. If it's going to feed into the outlet mall, do you guys have contracts with stores that are gonna be coming in that this is going to benefit?
No, we have nothing to, I mean, we have no ownership of the outlet mall or any control of that.
Well, I mean, like if the owner of the outlet mall says, okay, if we can get this overpass done, and we have contracts for 50 different people coming in, that would benefit, because it's gonna create jobs, and then people come in and do that, but do we have any kind of?
Could I make a comment? Because we keep talking about the outlet mall.
Well, is that what's gonna filter into?
It's west of there. But I will say that it has been discussed that this overpass will, you would hope, help redevelop the outlet mall?
Yes.
And, and I wanna be clear, at least from my standpoint, that is, this is not a, a overpass for the outlet mall. I don't think that that was ever part of the conception. This, it's been discussed, there is a need, MoDOT has identified the Highway 47 overpass as one that is in need of assistance with the congestion. I believe that was a 2006 traffic study. Emergency services have identified a need for a second route connecting north and south of the city. But, but I think that it's short-sighted to keep talking about this is a, an overpass, an instrument to help the outlet mall redevelop. To spend $15 million with the goal, the single goal of redeveloping the outlet mall would be negligent and foolish. I think that this has many more benefits than that.
Well, and I guess that's what I'm trying to fight about, but also because if we're spending X amount of dollars, how are we going to recoup that later?
The outlet mall has talked to us, they called the interchange a game changer for them.
That was their quote.
Yeah, that was their quote. They believe that that will help them land some anchor stores and give them.
Have they purchased the property?
There is an owner of the, of the outlet mall. They, and all we can go on is what they tell us, and you know what, I'm not a businessman, but I think that they probably have grandiose visions, whether they come true or not, but they have said it's a game changer, that hopefully that can help them land some anchor stores, and also provide the owner who they believe has the resources to incentivize those anchor stores. Whether it happens or not, I don't think that we should move forward with this project if the single goal is to enhance the outlet mall. That is, that is wrong, and it would be, it would be wrong for us to, to pass that just to the benefit of the mall owners.
And I understand that, but, you know, we're, I guess, are talking about putting it, I just don't see anything else kind of like in the vicinity. So, the only thing I can see as a visual aspect is the outlet mall.
I can visualize, I can visualize retail at the new overpass, I can visualize retail along the I-70 corridor.
I would have never envisioned retail at the end of Meyer Road in Winsfield.
Yeah, sure.
Never, in my life.
And I understand, yeah. And Winsfield is booming, it really.
So, I mean, that's my point, right now it's hard to say that that cornfield will be anything but a cornfield. But when you see other cornfields that have become very, very interactive areas for cities that help grow that retail, and grow that population, and grow that, that sales tax base, to help benefit us on all the things that we need, you know, the possibility is great, and to just ignore it because there's nothing there right now. My future goal is, I can see a really dynamic interchange there.
And you know what, I really wish Warrenton would boom just like Winsfield, I do, I love living here, just moved down to the county, absolutely love it, but I mean, we take in kids, and the 1% that you're talking at certain stores, I mean, for me, I do the budget, and I am the penny pincher, because we do, we take in children. And that's gonna be a deal breaker for me, because, I mean, again, we live on one income, I take care of the kids, I do all the school stuff, and I mean, I've got kids that are with me now that are graduating, who can't read.
But that's another reason why I need these other sales tax, to help benefit that piece of our community. So, I mean, it's a catch 22, and we can't really, neither one of us is right or wrong. It's just, how, how do you do it? Chicken, egg? I don't know, but if you don't have an egg, and you don't have a chicken, you'll never have anything.
So, I would just like to see a little bit more focus on schools, and I apologize for that, but I do have kids, and like I said, I've got two boys right now, they can't read, and they gave them the diploma. I'd just like to see a little bit more money raised, or if you could do one of those things for the school, phenomenal.
I do also wanna address the, when we had this work session, and it talked about the countywide tax, and, and the discussion was, wouldn't we be better off to address the transportation needs regionally? That puts me in an issue, because I'm here to represent the best interests of the city of Warrenton. I've been a county employee for years, I've been a Warren County resident my entire life. One of the things that sticks out to me, and I went back through my paperwork and got the minutes of that work session, it was discussed, a, how can we establish a working relationship between Warrenton, Pendleton, Truustale, Martha'sville, Innsbruck, Wright City, to establish this countywide transportation? And I think the glue to bringing all that together was Steve Etcher. Steve has now left Boonslick Regional, and I think there's a vacuum of leadership. Nothing gets anybody there, Steve's gonna be a hard person to replace. I think most of the people in the business committee, most of the people in government believe in Steve and believe in, in the visions that he had. One of the things that he said during that meeting was, he encouraged the city to move forward with the TDD, and move forward with the cost share application, because we are, there may be merit, I would support a overpass west of here, east of here, Spady Road, Midway, the more the merrier. But the only person, or the only organization that is in the shoots right now is the city of Warrenton. They've gotten their AJR, they've gotten federal and state permission, for lack of a better term, to move forward with this on their location. So, when Steve Etcher, who I respect, and I respect his vision, says, move forward with the TDD, but be willing to, at the point that you have to issue bonds to pay for that debt, be open to the idea of discontinuing the TDD if there is a countywide transportation tax. So, I think Steve recognized, and Boonslick Regional Planning Commission recognized the importance of an additional overpass, additional overpasses. I think it goes hand in hand with the EEZ. One of the things that we talked about for the EEZ is large parcels of land, and access to rail, and access to the interstate. And I think this does provide access to some of the Warrenton area and Warren County properties that are now in that EEZ. So, I think that, I think there are two issues here. One of them is the merits of the overpass, which I would debate, the benefit of an overpass with anybody. I, I don't know that those are right or wrong, but I think there are some very articulable benefits to the overpass.
I hope so. I just wish, you know, if you guys had like, like say Home Depot come and say, man, if you put that overpass in, we'll guarantee you, we'll put a store in there in five years. That's an incentive.
And that is, and I will tell you, without, they haven't thrown out a name, that is what the mall is saying, but again, I don't think you pass this, this is too big of a project to pass. Would that be great? Well, I think Chuck Lombard, who I've done my business with, would argue that's not good for them. But, but that kind of progress, certainly, I think that.
And I do, I hope the mall does come back to life, but I've heard that.
Man, I'm a man of midlife tonight.
I shot at the meadows, so.
Right, so, but I don't like that we keep coming back to, this is a, an exit ramp for the mall. I just think, I don't know that that's what you want to train.
I just hope that there's, you guys have some kind of, somebody giving an incentive to put it in, not just, we're putting it in, and then hope to God do a rain dance that it's good for your business.
If you believe the developers of the outlet mall, it's a game changer. I'm not, I'm not a businessman, I don't know if it is or not.
Yeah, and, you know, like I said, you know, they keep saying, we're gonna bring in these stores, these stores, these stores, and I get excited, and they're still not here.
Something the public needs to know, and I visited with MoDOT here a couple weeks ago, that if everything got to green light and we went forward, what would be the earliest we could move some dirt and start construction? Five years.
Five years.
So, that, everything we're talking about here is five years away, and if you put it on hold and stop it now, then does it become 10 years out, or 15 years? So, that's a concern that we.
Yeah, and I understand that, okay, so if you say it's five years out, now is that five years of charging all these different businesses and me and Warrenton, that 1%?
Maybe, we might not.
Is that part of it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
It could be, but it might not be.
Well, I think it would be presumptuous for us to think that we would start a major project without accumulating funds. Look at the explanation, look at the explanation of the gentleman who talked about the Troy, they started, they stopped it, they had accumulated some funds, so they did some projects with what they had. So, I think from a financial and business prudent perspective, you start collecting tax as soon as you're authorized.
And it is up, it authorizes up to 1, 1 cent, or up to 1%. And I think it's reasonable to believe that it will be 1%. And the other thing is.
Could it go any more than 1%?
No, no. The other, the other issue that has been discussed is that, at least, some of the visions that have been discussed are, this initial overpass goes in, it develops, hopefully everything in between develops, they start putting into that same pot, and hopefully, Highway 47, when it needs to be rebuilt, we're not gonna be dependent on MoDOT for the funds, because that overpass is gonna have to be addressed. And I know that has been discussed in some of the work sessions, that that is the long term, it's not just to put in this overpass, it's to put in this overpass, and then come back and improve the Highway 47 overpass. And the funds can only be spent within the district, within the geographical boundaries.
Now, question two, if you put in the overpass, and these businesses come in, you get them in, are you gonna give them tax payments to stay for X amount of years, or you guys wanna treat them as the other businesses that are collecting the money at that 1%?
There could be other TDDs assigned at each of the ends of the overpasses. It could be just like Winsfield, where if you wanna get a Target in, or a Lowe's in, and they were willing to do the TDD to develop it, you could get a separate TDD for that too. I mean, because if you go all the way up and down the park, which I'm sure you already know this, I mean, you guys have all been educated, Wayne's been out there and telling you, so not telling you anything new. But, I mean, you can go to Dearburg, you can go to Target, you can go to Lowe's, and as I've been talking to the community about this, because we've all been, been doing our due diligence, talking to our constituents, people don't even know that the tax is on there. I've asked them, next time, next time you go to Lowe's, look at your receipt, and see if there's two. if there's-
See, and I do do that.
But most people don't.
See, I'm a penny pincer, and I look at that. I'm like, nope, not going back there.
And I respect that, because I'm definitely not. But, but of the people I've talked to, most people don't even realize that tax is on there, for right or wrong. But that's, that's part of the discussion I want to have, you know, with, with the community as a whole, is, do you notice the 10 cents you're paying? You know, do you notice the dollar you pay on $100?
Actually, I do, because I go back several years, I would add a receipt, I added up the sales tax, what I spent per year, just because I wanted to know.
I bet if you talk to your friends-
Yeah. Oh, no, not everybody does.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I bet if you talk to your friends. And I totally respect that, because I don't even balance my checkbook and hope to God there's money and I want to go to the ATM. See, I'm very me.
Can we answer your questions? Okay. Anybody else want to address the board?
Yeah, I'd like to talk. Didn't plan to, I've probably been part of the group in decades, though. I'm Frank Mandana, new citizen of Warrenton. I was brought in from Kansas City as the center manager and to revitalize the, the center and bring it back.
Outlet mall?
Yeah, outlet mall.
Okay.
I call it the center business.
It's not really that.
It's an outlet mall.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know what? I like that. We should start doing that, because it's never going to be an outlet mall.
All right.
No.
I have to talk on both sides, both personally, I'll talk in from my employer's standpoint. Michelle does talk to my employer quite a bit. So, I'll try and distinguish the difference between the two. That overpass, yeah, it's going to be a game breaker for the owner. It has, the way it's going to be designed for roundabouts, makes me work harder, because I've already come across, go roughly, a dozen major chain retailers that want lighted intersections. Without lighted intersections, we're, we're off the project list. Roundabouts, I'm not a fan of, a fan of. I've seen them in Europe, I was in Ger-, I grew up in Germany, military and all that kind of stuff. You know, they're, they're putting them in, it's Belton, Missouri, small community, put them through, through the edge of communities. They're very difficult to maneuver around if they're small, even for small cars. Not really a fan. By way of business, is it going to help the mall? I think it is, because it's going to gain another access. I'm already talking to a lot of people that, that drive through here, both from the regional area in Missouri, cross-country. They talk about the gridlock that's up there. I've been here since May 6th. I've been in three of them. One of them just the other day, lasted about a minute long. And you think, well, a minute's pretty quick when you're just thinking about it. But when you're sitting on a roadway, it's usually moving pretty quick, and you're sitting there for more than 15, 20 seconds, you start getting worried. And, because things aren't moving. But it was stopped from the front, it was stopped from the rear. The only way we finally got out of it, so I drove off the roadway into the dirt. And it let, let loose on one side, allowed the other side to go. And that was the third one that I've been in since I've been here. The mall will be situated, if you look at the map, direct line of sight, as Michelle said, it's about 1,000 feet. When you drive it, it's closer to about 2,700 feet, you ever take, which places us almost halfway between 47 Highway and the new overpass. So, not a great selling feature, but it does have a way of, of customers coming in from the west, and those who need to bypass that gridlock, you know, they can go the other way and, and come in and come to us as well. As far as another overpass hurting retail business, I'm not totally sold on that, because, you know, I sold a house in Green Valley, Missouri, lived there for 17 years. They did it, the first time I ever heard of the TDD was when Adams Avenue Parkway developed right on I-70, and Walmart and Target and Home Depot and all the major people moved in. Did I go shop someplace else for the extra tax? Yeah, I did for a short while, until I saw that I was banning gasoline to go drive someplace else. And, and so I went back. I saw what gridlock did to Independence Center, Independence, Missouri. Large mall, very successful, largest mall on the, now the Kansas City metro side in Missouri. And that gridlock about destroyed that mall, and also Independence Common, right across the street, large strip mall, lots of big anchors, they all tanked because of gridlock. And when they, when they put in the Little Blue Parkway overpass, upgraded all that in there, a couple more strip malls sprung up, all name brand retailers, the mall came back, Independence Commons came back, the other strip malls, Forest, there's a few of them that are struggling like a lot of littler ones, where, where they kind of go quite a bit, but they're all doing real well. And the gridlock's basically been alleviated. And Christmas time, boys, a lot of you are going shopping, I tell you. So, I could dominate, and this is something I just finally heard tonight, and I've been waiting for weeks and weeks and weeks to hear it. I've kind of got my time here and there, not saying anything. And it finally brought it up, and I think you were the first one to bring it up, was the emergency factor. I've, I've got six years of law enforcement background, and the first thing I do when I go with communities, I, I look at the law enforcement presence, I look at retail and how the town's set up. It's just something I do, because I've spent so long working with criminals, both in the Bureau of Prisons, and I had the clearance to work with US Marshals in Woodsec. And spending so many years, you, you just pick up on their mentality and the way they do things. And I was kind of shocked that there's only one way to go north and south in this town to get to one side of the other. And I know where this guy's parked, because with my background, I'm always, I can't say I'm always looking over my shoulder, but I don't drive the same way to work every day. But I have to drive over that right overpass without driving six miles out of my way. And so, I, I want to know where this guy's parked, and I talk to him all the time out at the center. And, and that actually helped me my first week here, because I had to wash my U-Haul truck sitting out there at the mall, I found a place to live. And, and I think he's got some real dynamic young guys working for him. And it's, one way over is scary to me. It really is. You had an incident up underneath that overpass, and you won't be able to use the overpass. And, and law enforcement, you know that, there never seems to be just one cause. There's always a, a series of things that will cause an incident, or there'll be multiple incidents that happen. And sure enough, something will come on the overpass, and then something will jump off on the north side of town, and he'll have one officer up there, and he's going to call for help, and he's not going to get it. He's going to be all by himself. And, and those, his officer's got to drive, is it six miles round trip? My estimate, to get around to helping, if there's nobody else over there. And it's your hotel, and it's your restaurant, it could get robbed, and here you have one or more officers on that side of the freeway, you've got no help. That's just the way I think. I'm sorry. You know, I know the outlet centers on the other side, where they're all at. You know, that's great, I see them all the time. But personally, one overpass, to me, would, would be something, I would push that over the overpass as, as hard as I could. And, and not just for infrastructure and growing the city and growing business, because I don't think it's going to hurt your businesses. You know, you're a large chain, you advertise, you've got advertising dollars, everybody knows where you're at. When they go across country, and I've been ex-military, I travel so much, civil service, I travel a lot. And you look at where you're going to stay, about what time you're going to get there, they're looking for they can get here. But I've gone on, where I've seen areas that are so congested, and you can see up in the overpass and see a lot of traffic, I'll go on to some other town and stay. Or go on to some other town and eat at a restaurant. If it looks so congested, you can't get up there. But my issue is not so much as making business grow. Somehow, I'll find a way to sell the stuff. The roundabouts, I'm working on. Okay? But there, there's something that seems to be true for Missouri, and mainly I'm talking from the west side of town, and I'll throw out some, some interstates, not something you may not know of, but 71 Highway was supposed to have been completed back in the early 70s. Okay? I don't think it got completed until like 2003. Was it 13 Highway down south through Clinton, down by the lakes, and heads down towards Springfield, was supposed to be dual lane back in the early 70s. I don't think they got it done until the late 90s. Yeah, the promise is always there, and there's always delays. And like they said, we're working on something now that may take place three, four, five years from now. But if you delay it any longer, it could be 10 or 15, 20 or 30 years from now, or you're going to wait and get out a serious incident in the community where, where your police or emergency people can't get the other side to help you. Then you're going to say, well, why didn't you do something about it? You know? Well, it was too late now, they were trying to do something about it. I would think of law enforcement, emergency first, and think about business second, because you know what? And this is, this is a free country, it's capitalism. We'll find a way to make money, and we'll find a way to raise the sales.
Can I respond? Can I respond?
Yes.
Yeah, I, you know, if you as a owner developer were to come to the council and file, and file petition with, with the courts for a TDD and Business to the West to you and Business to the West to you, I would be tremendously supportive of that. Because you are the owner developer, you're saying from a marketing perspective, I'm willing to take the risk of having my customers pay 1% more for to come and shop for me. And so, I don't have an issue with that. The issue I have with this i- is that the owner developers within the district are not the ones who initiated it. And that's, that's a major difference. And I understand, I think John's right, I think there's two issues here. I think there's an issue of need, and I think there's an issue of finance. And I, and I don't even doubt my mind that if we took this vote of a sale, of a citywide sales tax, which would generate a lot more money than the TDD does, because I asked Terry, what percentage of the inc., of the sales tax comes in through the area of the TD versus the entire city? And our estimate was, what, 62? Only 62% of the city's tax comes into the TDD.
68.
Or 68. Why would we not go to the public and say, we want you to vote on a sales tax to put an intersection in to give us for public safety, then Ralph, who's sitting back here who represents emergency services, could go out to the public and make his case that you need to pass this be, as a taxpayer, as opposed to the way we're doing it where the city council is imposing a TDD on his business? I mean, his profit in his business is, is, he knows his business better than you do. So, he stands up there and says, some of these margins are close, he understands that. And maybe he can find a way to work, and I think he will find a way, because that's, he's a businessman. But it, but my problem with this is not the overpass. My problem with this is how we get there. And I, and I, you know, I, you know, Karen says all these people, you know, who she talks to don't have issues. People who talk to me have issues with the fact that 14 people are going to impose a tax in a district that they shop in. And the business owners who talk to me said, if I come to you and said, would you do a TDD for me, then we'd be supportive of it. So, if you come back to the city, if this thing falls apart, and I don't know that it will, if this thing falls apart, and you come back to the city as a owner developer and say, well, we're going to file a petition with the courts, would you be supportive? I would be supportive. But that's for you as an owner developer on the property you own. And I think that's the distinction in the community.
And that's why I say I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk tonight from two sides. Because from the business side, I can see where, where the owner's coming from, okay, with, with almost a million dollars invested. And, and this has already had it for a year, and I don't like, is making money, okay? But I also see it from the personal side to where, hey, before coming here, I was unemployed for a year and a half. And I think age has something to do with it. And got a job selling cars, never thought I'd ever do that, but do what you got to do, okay? Four months in there, get laid off after they laid off 12 other salesmen, and laid off again, and, and finally back, back to work again. So, 1% to me kills me. I think that's very high, actually. Now, I don't see the numbers and all that kind of stuff like you guys see for the whole community. And, and, you know, I think a quarter of 1% kind of impacts me. You know, leaving the light on when you walk out of room, you know, and the light doesn't turn off, impacts, impacts my wallet. We don't make much money. You know? And I always like to have empty cupboards. So, that's why I say I speak from both sides, that I can understand the increase in taxes, whether it's a TDD or a sales tax, it's coming out of my wallet. You know? And, and when I can't put food in my cupboard, quarter percent, where am I going to get it from? It means I eat less food. You know? That's how I always feel. So, I see, I see what you're saying. And I also know that the other side is well, the business side.
Sure.
You may take a break at nine o'clock, Mayor.
Thank you, Frank.
You were going to what?
Is it, uh, is there anybody else want to address the board? You all wanting to recess? Is that what you're doing?
I, I'm just going back to what you told me earlier, you thought it was necessary to take a break.
You all need a recess?
He had chocolate, so he's re-
He's got, he's got a sugar high.
He's revived again.
No other comments?
What is staying on?
Ralph, I'm putting you on a clock.
Oh, sure. Put Ralph on it.
He's the one who's going to respond, do you use our members?
Mayor, well, I just want to basically address you guys as a taxpayer of the city, not as the ambulance service. But the one thing that does concern me and has for a while is the fact that we just had the one overpass. I think it is imperative that, you know, we do something to get that second overpass. And the city's had foresight, working with this for sort of years now already, so, again, I just want to reiterate the importance of us having that second overpass, because it's just a matter of time before we shut the 47 overpass down, big multi-vehicle accident underneath it. And we've already put one tractor trailer over the edge of it. But, I mean, you know, it's not going to be that hard, because I can remember one winter night, we were working a accident up here in the median, and you don't think a state trooper can cuss? There are some that can, because he had a semi jackknife and probably come within about one foot hitting his vehicle. And again, I mean, you know, it's, we're sitting right here on the crest, we could have an accident east or west or underneath it. Now, sooner or later, we will shut that thing down. And that's the last thing we want to do. And then, like everybody said before, too, us getting around that, you know, getting around, either going over at Pendleton coming in, or going down to Strax Church. Neither of those overpasses can handle, you know, the, the traffic that we're putting over the 47 overpass. So, you know, we definitely need to do something to get that other overpass in. Unfortunately, and it's going to take taxpayers' dollars, it's going to be local and, and matching for MoDOT, but, you know, we just need to do something. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you for your service to the community too. I know you've, he's been somebody who we've been all coming for a long time.
In church. He collapsed in church, he takes care of the-
Not hearing from anybody else, I'm going to move on.
Well, you know, there's definitely a need, we've known that for years. We've been kicking this thing around for about 10 years, off and on. Back in 2005, the mayor and a board from the city of Warrenton went down to a strategic planning seminar down at the workshop down at Innsbruck. And it was mentioned and talked about at that time, that there was definitely a need for a second overpass in Warrenton. And that's been going on, we've had a lot of work. We've spent money on engineering, we've spent money on legal fees and everything else to get to this point. We've got federal approval, we've got everything else, we've been jumping through the hoops for MoDOT and everybody else to get to this point. Been a lot of time spent, Michelle and Chris Kerviel and Terry have spent a lot of hours on this thing the last three years, just to get to where we're at today. And I think that we need to continue to do something, just move on. We've got to keep moving forward, because it's desperately needed. And with the improvements on Highway 47, I was at a meeting with MoDOT here sometime back, with the new bridge over at Washington, and straightening out Hookbowl Hill and repaving 47. They anticipate a lot more traffic coming along 47 with all the improvements. So that's just going to put more pressure on the 47, I-70 overpass. So we do need a second overpass in this town. It's a safety issue, it also opens up an area for future development out that way, in that area out there. And now with a certain teen plant going up there at Goldenberg, there's going to be like 200 trucks a day going in and out of that place, and if something happened on I-70 where they couldn't get through, they're going to use the service roads that are ice. This overpass out here is going to be extremely busy. It's something that's needed, and we need to look at it real hard.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Moving on then. Then, clear, John.
If you give me two minutes, I promise I won't say anything. No matter what, I've never met you before, I'm a creature of habit, and I shop at Fastlane. I know the bakers, I know Kenny May. The one thing that I would ask is, no matter what direction this goes, if it goes forward, and I know you're opposed to it, I will acknowledge that perhaps the city, that the communication wasn't what it should have been. The city may feel that they communicated, but in the end, if you feel we didn't communicate, perception is reality. I would encourage, both from the city's aspect and from the business standpoint, even though we have differences of opinion, I do think that the communication can improve, and, you know, I think that good negotiation is when nobody goes home happy. When everybody kind of ends up, "Yeah, I didn't get everything I wanted." So I pride myself on being accessible, be more than happy to provide you with all of my phone numbers. And again, I think that, no matter where you view this issue, I think that it's never too late to stop the communication over. I'm done.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion, and I don't expect it to be seconded, but I feel like I need to go on record. And the motion's based on the business fact. We talked about the issue of 14 versus 8,000, we talked about the tax district being imposed on owners of the district. I think from a business perspective, you want to generate as much revenue as you possibly can when you take a project on this size. And we know from what the clerk said, that if we, in this community, were to pass a 1% sales tax on the whole community, it would generate 32% more in revenue. A sales tax could simply be passed by setting up an election, and the election could occur maybe November, maybe April, and we could start taxing immediately, and we would not lose a time delay. And I think it's, in my opinion, it's fair to the taxpayer to allow them to vote on this as opposed to 14. So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we instruct the city attorney to notify the court that the city is removing the petition, and direct the, what's your title, Terry?
Director of Operations.
Director of Operations to start the process of setting up a vote to put a ballot issue on to increase the sales tax in the city of Warrenton by 1% for the purposes of transportation improvement. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Not hearing a second, that motion died. I think unless someone else wants to address the transportation issue, I'm going to move on. I'm ready to convert some bills.
Thank you.
To ordinances, and the first bill is bill number 30-13.
Call for a first reading of bill number 30-13.
Second. Motion by Alderman Dreyer, second by, is that Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Clark for bill number 30-13.
In ordinance authorizing execution of contract with the Gervil Law Firm LLC in the city of Warrenton, Missouri for legal services.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 30-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Cornell, for second and final reading and passage of bill number 30-13.
In ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with the Gervil Law Firm LLC in the city of Warrenton, Missouri for legal services.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Bill number 36-13.
Call for the first reading of bill number 36-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Dreyer for first reading of bill number 36-13.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between M Engineering LLC, doing business as Cochran, and the city of Warrenton, Missouri for engineering services on Route 47 for a sidewalk from Warrior Avenue to Drive Ford Crossing.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 36-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, or second by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of bill number 36-13.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between M Engineering LLC, doing business as Cochran, and the city of Warrenton, Missouri for engineering services on Route 47 for a sidewalk from Warrior Avenue to Drive Ford Crossing.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Bill number 37-13.
Call for first reading of bill dash, bill number 37-13.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, was that second by Alderman Dreyer? Second by Alderman Dreyer for first reading of bill number 37-13.
In ordinance amending section 145.070 and 145.140 of chapter 145 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri regarding the sale of cemetery lots.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number 37-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Kastlerly for second and final reading and passage of bill number 37-13.
In ordinance?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In ordinance amending section 145.070 and 145.140 of chapter 145 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri regarding the sale of cemetery lots.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Bill number 38-13.
Call for first reading of bill number 38-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Kastlerly, first reading of bill number 38-13.
In ordinance providing for the non-renewal of the employment agreement between the city of Warrenton and Terry Thorne.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 38-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Dreyer for second final and passing reading of bill number 38-13.
In ordinance providing for the non-renewal of the employment agreement between the city of Warrenton and Terry Thorne.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Bill number 39-13.
Call for first reading of bill number 39-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dreyer, second by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number 39-13.
In ordinance providing for the non-renewal of the employment agreement between the city of Warrenton and Gray County Shell.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 39-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Kastlerly for second reading and passage of bill number 39-13.
In ordinance providing for the non-renewal of the employment agreement between the city of Warrenton and Gray County Shell.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.[1783.91]